All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning our meeting. Before we begin it, I will invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Randall Harriman will bring the invocation.
Dear my Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings you've given this city, Lord, and we're thankful for all those at a city level and individually. Lord, we're in a blessed area, and we really appreciate all the blessings you give us. Lord, pleased we be with the city of Baltimore this evening as they've had some issues in their city, Lord, and we pray that you comfort those and help those that have lost loved ones and have lost part of their bridge there, Lord. We thank you for all the blessings. Help us tonight to make decisions that will benefit our residents here in Springdale, and may our decisions be blessed in your sight in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Randall. All right. Again, welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. I'll call this meeting to order. This is Tuesday, March 26, 2024, and we will begin things by asking our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo.
Here.
Jeff Watson. Mike Overton. Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey.
Present.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
Ernest Kay.
Here.
All right, thank you. Item four is the agenda item that the council places on each regular meeting. It's comments from our residents, and if we have any residents that would like to address the council tonight, we ask that you come to the microphone at the podium, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief, knowing that the council will take no action on what you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Yeah.
Is it on? It's so small. My name is Alice Gachuzo Colleen. My address is 1901 West Shady Grove Road here in Springdale. My son Javier, he's my sidekick for the night. So I just, I came today. I would like to respectfully, you guys know I love Springdale. This is my home. I've loved Springdale for over 30 years. And I know that we have a new project underway, a new street. And so I would like to respectfully ask that the East Emma and West Emma connector that is going to come, I would like to see if that could be named Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Connector. I think that it would be a great addition to our city, and it literally would connect east side and west side of Springdale. And there's, you know, nothing else to be said. I mean, it's Dr. King and connection and love and stuff. And so, yeah, I really think that our city would benefit from having MLK Boulevard or road or street or whatever it is. All others, you know, metro cities in northwest Arkansas, Rogers, Bentonville, Fayetteville, everyone has one. And we don't want to be like everyone, but there's no reason for us to not have that. And that's all I got. You want something?
All right.
He's just here.
Thank you, Alice.
I appreciate you all.
Let me, let me give a little more context to the council because you and I have talked about this.
Yes.
And Alice came, and of course, Alice has been instrumental in MLK parade and celebration that we have every year, and been a great leader in that for our residents. Alice came, as she just said, interested in naming a street. We know some of the headaches that come with renaming an existing street. You know, people don't like to change their addresses, and it's, you know, it just... So we talked about the possibility of our new overpass, which is going to, as Alice said, is going to connect Emma and Harbor. And it would be a very visible project, but a project if just the section between 40th on the, on the east side and 48th on the west side of I-49. It'd be very few, if any, addresses to change. It might be a couple on the west side. But I thought that, that was a pretty good idea, and it would also be a very visible project and an important one. Has Ben, where are we at on that? Has Ben here? Where are we at on that, Ben, as far as getting, commencing construction? Do we know?
No, proceed when asked.
Great. Okay. So that'll begin pretty soon. So council, and Ernest, you might want to weigh in on and remind the council, we just recently changed the criteria for changing street names, although this is not changing a street. It's, it would be a new street. Blake also is fire chief and EMS and response times. If you would see any issue with that, you know, that's something you'll need to be engaged in also. But, you know, Alice and I talked about it. I suggested she come and bring it to you all, and then it'll be up to y'all how you want to proceed. So, okay? Any questions for? I know we don't get into big discussions usually when a resident first brings something, and you're getting hit with this just right now, so.
And I appreciate y'all because I am a hitter. I do appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me and everything that he has to say.
Hey, you did great.
He's talking so much, you know. But I appreciate y'all.
Thank you all. Thank you. All right. Anyone else need to speak to an issue that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, we'll close the public comment time and move to item five, which is the approval of minutes. Council, you've had access to these for a few days. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look them over, and if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes as presented. Are all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Item six is procedural motions. You'll notice there's one change. The upcoming resolution, item 7A, we're going to read in its entirety rather than just the title, but other than that, it's the same as we have, I think, pretty much every, every meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to approve item six.
So moved.
A and B.
Second.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please. We've put in electronic voting, and this is the second meeting. So, and I wasn't here the last meeting, so I may, that probably won't be the first time I screw up tonight, or the last time I screw up tonight. I just call for the vote. Got a motion, a second. Y'all vote. All right, great. I'm gonna like that, but I'm gonna have to get used to it. So y'all are one, one meeting up on me on that. All right, move on to item seven. I'll just, I'll just read the title. A resolution recognizing the service of Mayor Charles N. McKinney by naming and designating the new constructed city council chambers to be known as Charles N. McKinney Council Chambers. And I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff. This is a real honor. Love to, appreciate having the family and friends here tonight. Thank you all for being able to be here. And, and I'm, I know Jeff is going to, Jeff, Councilman Watson's gonna read the entire resolution, and so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Anna gave me the larger print because I think she was afraid I'd mess up to read the resolution. I appreciate the honor of, of being able to read this resolution tonight. The majority of the crowd out here tonight are family and friends of Mayor McKinney, and so grateful to see them in the audience. Rusty and Suzie and David and Mary Beth are all present with their family and friends, and so honored to have them here tonight. I have known most of those people all my life, having grown up and spent so much time as a child with them and at the lake or at the Bryant Swimming Pool. So I'm very honored to be able to read this tonight. And also, I wanted to mention, I think that Denise and Rex and Jeff Harper, Harper was gonna be here. He couldn't make it though, but he wanted me to say something. All worked with Mayor McKinney. I don't know. And Patsy? Patsy, anybody else? Yeah, Kevin's here. Ernest was here. Okay, sorry. Ben was here. Several people in the audience. James, thank you. All of those people. Jeff wanted me to mention something about how frugal Mayor McKinney was during his time, and that, you know, he was first, he served for 16 years as a councilperson, and then as the mayor, first in 1979. But Jeff pointed out that not until 1992 did we have a sales tax. And the city always had a very tight budget, and what a great job that he thought that Mayor McKinney did in leading our city through such frugal times. And he wanted to be sure and mention that. I don't think we had a bond issue. Ernest, help me out on that one. I don't think we ever had a bond issue during Mayor McKinney's time as well. Isn't that correct? Yep. I think the, well, the first penny was in 1992. First penny sales tax, but that was not a bond issue. But I'll read the resolution, and then if anyone has anything they'd like to say, I'll open it up to comments. Whereas Charles McKinney grew up on Main Street, across the street from the Methodist Parsonage where the current playground is located. Prior to graduation from Springdale High in 1944, Charles McKinney worked as a soda jerk at Colgar's Drug. After serving in the Navy as a pharmacist mate, he returned to Springdale and went to work at Joyce's Drug, currently at the Odd Soul. And whereas Charles married Thelma Ketzel, the new Methodist preacher's daughter, in 1948, he became a licensed practical druggist by apprenticeship in 1955. He and Thelma raised four children while Charles managed the drugstore. They lived in the Dogwood Apartments on Emma Avenue and later on Roger Circle Drive, always living within a few blocks of downtown, the drugstore and City Hall, often working 24/7, returning to the store and City Hall after hours, filling prescriptions at attending committee, chamber, and council meetings, and the administrative board of First Methodist Church. And whereas, after serving the city as a council member, beginning in 1962 as Ward Three Alderman for 16 years, chairing several council committees, including finance and ordinance committees for 10 years each, and serving on the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission, Charles ran and was successfully elected as the full-time mayor of the city of Springdale in 1978. And whereas during his tenure as mayor, McKinney oversaw the construction of two fire department substations, the Tyson Sport Complex, the Shiloh Museum of Ozark History, the John Powell Senior Center, the Springdale Municipal Airport Terminal, the expansion of Springdale Public Library, the old city administration building, and the start of construction of another fire station. During this time, Springdale grew from 10,000 people in the early '60s to almost 30,000 in 1990 to an estimated 45,000 in 2000. He led Springdale from a farming community to a city with industrial opportunities. And whereas at his retirement, McKinney stated Mr. Joe Steele had stressed to him the importance of giving back. Together with Steele, Harvey and Bernice Jones, Gene George, Willard Walker, and other Springdale citizens in medicine, business, and chickens, Lee Zachary at the Chamber of Commerce had everyone traveling by bus, recruiting industry, and serving cheese whiz to politicians in Little Rock and Washington. Charles's accomplishments and the changes he oversaw were only possible because he had the support of Springdale's greatest generation and everyone who worked for the city of Springdale and the Chamber of Commerce. Whereas the lessons of giving back resonated with his children. Mary worked with the No Arc Girl Scouts, the Jones Center, and the Circle of Life Hospice. Suzie taught with the Springdale Schools for over 32 years. David operated McKinney Drugs, and Charles, who I didn't realize his name was Charles, everybody called him Rusty, worked in leadership of the New York City Parks. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council for the city of Springdale, Arkansas, that the newly constructed city council chambers in Springdale City Hall is hereby named and designated as Mayor Charles N. McKinney Council Chambers in recognition of former Mayor McKinney and the many years of dedicated service to the city of Springdale. Passed and approved this 26th day of March, 2024.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Mayor, could I, could I say something?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Rex.
You know, I was lucky enough to serve with Mayor McKinney, and if you read the papers, you might think that we didn't like each other, but I love Charles McKinney, you know. And one of the stories I always tell is that, you know, there wasn't anything happening downtown or anything, and we was gonna build a new city hall. Well, some of us, we didn't, we wanted to move it. And Mayor McKinney sent Walter Turnbull, and he needed my vote. And Taldo, it's just sent all kinds of people, and I wasn't gonna change my mind.
Imagine that.
Yes. Well, we was got, one Tuesday morning, we was gonna vote on it that night, and I got a call, and this elderly lady was on the other end. And I said, so is this Rex Bailey? And I said, yes, it is. Said, well, this is Bernice Jones. And I said, well, ma'am, how could I help you? And she said, well, I want to talk to you about City Hall. I said, okay, you talk to me. Yes. She said, well, you know, and Mayor McKinney said this too. What wise people, you know? He said, you know, if they move City Hall, downtown will never come back. And I asked, I said, well, Ms. Jones, you want me to vote for that? She said, well, no, you do what you want to. You got my vote. You got it. So I called Mayor McKinney up, and if the mayor tell you he's gonna do something, he's gonna do it. So I said, Mayor, I need to come and talk to you about City Hall. I said, okay. I said, we're gonna make a deal. Ah, Bailey. He said, well, I'm not good at those deals. I said, well, you need to make this deal. So I go down and meet with him. I said, tell you what, I'll vote for City Hall if you build a U Center next. He said, well, we're trying. I said, that ain't good enough. You tell me you're gonna do it. And sure enough, I voted for it, and he built the U Center the next. But also, if the mayor told you something, he's gonna do it. And, but he, he always thought he'd change my mind, and I never told him. Didn't have anything to do with Charles McKinney. It had everything to do with Bernice Jones. But I want the family to know I loved your dad, and I have the utmost respect for him, even when we are arguing, okay?
Great. All right. Anyone else?
I'll speak.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm Charles also, and on behalf of our, our family, I'll say this does feel like going to church. That we're just so used to seeing people that my parents respected and being on the good behavior, and we are so appreciative of this honor. And we know that he would approve of that, his bus being placed in such an important spot, because I know how dear these council meetings were and how, how much he treasured people like Rex. You know, because I think not everybody needs to hear what they want to hear all the time. And we are, I know that he would be very proud of the accomplishments of each of you and of course, of the mayor. And we are very appreciative to have the knowledge that he will be in this spot of honor. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and thank you to the, all the family for being here. And this is, you know, I never got to serve with Mayor McKinney. Did get to do some upholstery work for him, and, but I always, and Jeff sort of referenced it in, it was sort of referenced in the resolution. But just as a resident who grew up here and certainly always respected Mayor McKinney and the family, and I just always think of those 20 years, along with the years on city council, but for me especially, the 20 years he served as mayor, as being such an important pivotal time, you know, in such a fast-growing city. I mean, there are, there are things that really have to change, and the way he guided this city and our, in our council through that change, through, you know, it was a time where the city had to kind of grow up. You know, that's just my words, but I kind of, kind of always viewed it that way. And, and so we knew when, when we, I can promise you, Rex, there was never any doubt when we rebuilt City Hall, it was gonna stay downtown. And so, so I, I really appreciate that story. But, but it's, it's really an honor to get to do this, so thank you. Thank you to the family for, for accepting this honor. And with that said, if nobody has anything else, we'll vote.
Carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. And again, thank you all for being here, and, and I think that deserves a round of applause. Thank you all. Now you don't have to leave, you know, this is, this is exciting stuff we got coming up.
Well, Mayor, Mayor Beth mentioned one time, kind of like my family, that they never saw Charlie on Tuesdays. You know, they grew up, they never saw him on Tuesdays.
I bet that's right. Boy, I'll tell you. That's a lot of... 36 years. All right, Patsy, I think you're up.
Do we get to the slides? There we go. The first item on the agenda is a request to rezone 4.77 acres located at 12982 Ziglar Lane. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to SF1. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request, and the title of the ordinance reads "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low-density, single-family residential district SF1 and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution be adopted, or the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Are there any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, let's vote.
Carries 7-0.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the emergency clause. I think we're, are we ready to vote again? Just curious to see how this would work.
Emergency clause carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. Thank you guys back there for, we're learning together. All right, Patsy, go ahead.
As usual, there are emergency clauses because they're pending actions on these properties. The next request is to rezone 0.92 acres located at 707 South 48th Street. The request is to rezone the property from C5 down to C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency.
Move the orders pass.
Second.
Patsy, I was having a hard time determining where this was from the photograph.
Okay, can, see that little small track? It's got a small building in front of Burton. It's the, it's just that little lot in front of Burton.
South of Sams. Furniture. Yeah.
The tire stores on the corner, R&amp;R Tires on the corner. It's the very next lot.
Okay, any other questions?
Is there some reason why you would go from a C5 to a C2? Because can't you do everything in a C?
Well, we discussed that with the property owner, and they feel that the C2 better fits their businesses. They want to operate there. What it does is they can't have a drive-through window, and there's a few things they can't do there, but it's their choice to downgrade it to a C2.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This has thrown me off a little bit. Anybody in the audience need to comment on this? Okay, now we can vote.
Carries 7-0.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we're ready to vote on the emergency clause?
Emergency clause carries 7-0.
The next item is a request to rezone 10.5 acres located at 261 North 40th Street. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to MF12. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to medium-density, multifamily residential district MF12 and declaring an emergency.
Is there any opposition in Planning Commission on this one?
No.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Does that cover both sides of Emma right there, Patsy?
No, it's, there's a little bitty triangle on the south side of the, of Emma Street that was split when the street went through. So you see that little bitty arrow on the, I mean, that little bitty arrow on the south side of Emma that's adjacent to that other MF, well, it's actually adjacent to the commercial property there. There's a lot of floodplain on this piece of property, so it's gonna be a challenging piece of property to...
Looks like almost all of that, south of Emma, is, that's small pieces in the floodplain almost.
There's a few pieces to the, a few areas to the north closer to the east side that is not in the floodplain, and so that's, it's gonna be a challenge to develop this piece of property.
But it, but it's still MF12, both sides of Emma?
Right.
And, yeah, that would be a problem.
That little corner, and that attaches to that MF12 that's already there, or MF4 there. There's MF4 on that side. I don't know that there's anything that's gonna be built on that side. They didn't want to do a survey to take that part of it, and the street actually split the road.
You say no opposite, no opposition, Patsy?
Don't think so. Don't remember any. And all the adjacent property owners were notified.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Does anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Anyone else on the council? Any other questions? Okay, we're ready to vote.
Carries 7-0.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Emergency clause, guys? We did.
Sure makes it quiet. That thing's quiet.
It's really quiet.
Yeah, it's up there to vote.
That was my fault. Sorry. Emergency clause carries 7-0.
Feeling everybody looking at you? Yeah.
And the last item is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a large scale at 501 East County Line Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the waiver request. They are donating the additional right-of-way needed for an extension of County Line Road that's on the master street plan. The title of the resolution reads "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks..." Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, and Sidewalks is Set forth in Ordinance Number 3725 to 501 East County Line Road in Connection with L 2411, a Large Scale Development Plan," and the Planning Commission is recommending option one.
We plan on taking that all the way through to Old Missouri future.
Yeah, and go all the way to the, to the west to go over 49 and tie into...
Yeah, but are you talking about to the east?
Yeah, it'll go, the Master Street Plan shows it all the way across. It's the Don Tyson on the north side of the city on the Master Street Plan.
So, Master Street includes that, but that's not part of this bond road program?
Not, not this portion that we've got going on right now. No, we've got to start somewhere, but they're willing to dedicate the additional right-of-way needed because this moves it a little bit further away from the homes. It gives us a chance to not have to go back and acquire that right-of-way.
So, the right-of-way they're dedicating that we're talking about is on the north edge of the property?
Right, right. And they are moving their parking lot and a small building out of that so that that area can be used.
Okay.
Move the resolution be adopted. Option one.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second for approval of the resolu, of the ordinance with option one. Any other questions or comments, council or the audience? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Carry seven zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to item D. Oh, that was item D. We're at nine, Finance Committee Chairwoman Amelia Taldo. Amelia?
Yes, my iPad is messing up when I get to it. I'll open up Finance Committee and item A is the resolution expressing the willingness of City of Springdale to apply for utilized federal aid funding for the design of Apple Blossom Avenue from Goat Springs Road to Old Wire Road, and this was presented by Ryan Carr Engineering Department, and all of the items on Finance Committee was recommended to forward with recommendation for approval.
So, to summarize, this is our request for this year's regional surface transportation block grant funding. Our plan is to apply for the design of Apple Blossom Avenue from Highway 265 to Goat Springs Road. This $400,000 in this resolution is half of the required 20% local match, and the City of Lowell has approved for the other half. And with that, I'm free to answer any questions you have.
Did you say Lowell has already approved?
Yes, they have.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments?
I do.
Okay.
So, Ryan, we're asking for a grant to fund that, but are we doing that design? Is that in the plans right now to go ahead and start that design anyway, or how's that work?
That's what this funding is for, is to begin.
But what if we don't get the grant? I guess is what I'm asking. Do we still, are we still moving forward with that design, or how's that work?
It will be delayed, but we would still like to pursue it in subsequent, subsequent years for grant funding.
Any times, Jeff, your first year, you won't get, get it funded because we're competing with other projects, but we wanted to get in the queue, so it would, it would, it would create a delay, but, but it's a project that we're confident we'll move forward with at some point.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so we're ready to vote.
Carry seven zero.
Item B is a resolution amending the 2024 budget of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and this is presented by Colby Fulfer, Chief of Staff.
Thank you. This is a resolution amending our 2024 budget. As we discussed at the committee meeting last week, our dispatchers are one of the categories that we need to give on-call pay. It's one of those positions that if someone is out for whatever reason, we need to be able to have a backup plan for that. Probably should have been doing this, something that Chief caught. So, we want to amend the budget. It will cost an additional $8,250 for the remainder of the year, starting in April, and that would cover that amount, and it would go into, well, you can see the, the line item number there, but it'll be an increase of 8,250. It'll go into incentive pay, but it will be on-call pay.
And that will be going forward from now on?
Yeah, you'll see that in the 2025 budget.
Move the resolution forward.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. You may vote.
Carry seven zero.
Item C is a resolution to waive competitive bidding and to enter into a contract with Innovative Business Interiors for interior design work, and this is presented by Colby Fulfer.
Thank you. As we discussed at committee the other day, we wanted to make sure that when we got into the building that we took good care of the inside. Some of the interior design work was not part of the building process. It's just like whenever you build a house, you got to get the furniture to go with it, and we did that, and there's some decorations that we'd like to get. We all don't have the same taste, and so we wanted to make sure that this was all uniform, and we wanted somebody that had experience in interior design to come in and help us. So, after talking to the mayor, we reached out to the same company who helped us furnish this building, and they've got people on staff that do this professionally. They did make a presentation at committee the other night, and I think the recommendation to move forward was to go with the option that was approximately $131,000. We did have some discussion about that on, on live plants versus the artificial plants, and I think the team did bring some samples of those in case you wanted to see those and what those look like. And there was some reasoning behind choosing those, so, but that's the resolution that was forwarded to you tonight.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
You don't ask Pat anything, you get his help.
I don't know who needs to see them, but...
Jeff, Jeff needs to see him over there. My wife calls.
I think he needs to feel him.
He would have to. And I know it's, if you touch it, you would know this would be one of the snake plants. But they would also be caught in, around a seed stem. This is something that's typical in a lot of hotels and things we all know with the plants. And this is another one that I could use more of. But they, when you touch it, it feels like silk is rubbery.
I think I would like a lot. Our concern was maintenance and try not to kill plants, but surely a city of 100,000 people, we could grow some plants.
You'd be surprised, Jeff. It is a good option. We, we know, though, that even in the other building, there's a lot of little ones that are coming in down these hallways, and as we were all little once, we liked to pull and grab on things, and we just, we feel like it would just be replacing after replacing, and so that's the reason we chose the artificial ones.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. You may vote.
Carry seven zero.
That closes Finance, thank you.
All right, thank you, Amelia. Item 10, Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item before us last week, and it was recommended for approval. As I said last week, a few weeks back, Rotary met with us and showed us some descriptions of a park or an addition to the Rotary Park out at Tyson Complex, and it's a really unique deal honoring Gerald Harp, and like I said, it was recommended for approval. I'll read the resolution. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Springdale Rotary Club for the construction of Gerald Harp Memorial Park Project at Randall Tyson
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Yes, great opportunity to partner with Rotary. We're getting a, it's going to be a great amenity to the park. And are there any, any other questions, or anyone in the audience need to speak to this? I don't see Greg here tonight from Rotary. Go ahead.
I was just going to update. I stepped out at the meeting last time. It was asked how much is in the park set aside. This has already been accounted for last summer. It was appropriated, so it reduced our amount in park set aside. To date, we have $118,000 that are in there now. This has already been taken out of the previous amount.
Right. I think we've approved some more money since then, actually. I think some more's come out of it since then, but, I mean, that's where we're sitting today.
That's right.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, vote please.
Carry seven zero.
All right, item 11, CDBG Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of y'all missed last week's at our committee meeting. What, we brought all 11 nonprofits forward. Of course, we couldn't fund all of them at the amount they wanted, so we, we're going to, if approved, we're going to cut everybody 34%, is what, but everybody will be funded. As an example, I know one of them was going to get 20, Compassion House was going to get 20,000, and they were, now they're going to get 16, but they were very, very happy with it. They'll pay the utilities for one year. Although Patsy and Deanie's been working on it, we are going to bring forward, we're going to do it different this year before I get out of here, so we are studying other towns of our size. Patsy, do you have anything to say, or what we're thinking about doing?
While Patsy's coming, I want to address something, and I thought the article, and I'm not saying this because he's sitting here, but I thought the article in the Democrat Gazette that Tom did was great, but I was very disappointed. I know you don't write the headlines, Tom. So, I was disappointed in the headline because it, it made it sound like we were cutting, and this is, this is a new process every year. This, you know, they come, we don't know who's going to apply and who's not, and they ask for what they want to ask for, but just because we can't fund all that, it's not that we're cutting them. We're funding what we can afford to fund. And so, I, I kind of needed to get that out there. I had, I did have the opportunity to say that to a few media stations, but the headline in the paper really made it sound like we were cutting back on, and, and we're really not cutting back. It's a new process every year, and we don't, you know, we may get different entities, while a lot of them do apply every year, not all of them do. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that.
And we also, Patsy and Dean did a great job. We kind of covered a lot of, a lot of territory there, the young, the old, the food, the drug rehabilitation out here, which is great. Those people don't have anywhere to go, and what, so y'all did a good job doing all those and figuring that out.
I think getting a chance to see all those organizations is kind of eye-opening because there's a lot of organizations out there doing great things in the City of Springdale, and we can't fund them all. What we're working on is a new matrix where we will ask you to highlight or to pick some priority categories that we want to fund in the next year, and then we will limit our applications to those funding types of method, more in line with what HUD asks us for, so we're going to, we're developing a new application that gives us more, more information about each of the applications, and we'll come back to you this fall with a method in order to, for you to decide, do you want to feed, do you want to approve those that provide food service? Do you want those that provide utilities? We'll have some parameters. You pick what you want, and then when we ask for applications, those will be the only ones that we accept. The next year, we may do something different, but at least it gives the, the community out there who provides lots of services an opportunity to know what we're asking for. It's a good program. Councilman Powell asked me about what if we get more money? Well, if we get more money, we'll increase it up to the total of 15%, so they may get a little more, a little less, we don't know yet what it's going to be, but I do know that HUD was approved in the previous congressional approval at the same level they were last year. One of the things that could change it for us, if the new census figures are put into place and it becomes a new census figure, that puts us in a little bit more money, so there's always some factors in there. And then if not everybody uses all their money, sometimes there's more money put into that pot. We always use our money. We give our money directly to all these organizations so they can use it as quickly as possible.
And that's, that was another issue I had with the, the way the conversation went and I, about cutting. I don't know, last year, we might have done 15%, or this, or this may be the first year we're doing 15%.
No, I think we did.
But, but we haven't done 15% more than a year or two at the most.
Yeah, two years. It was, I think it went from 10 to 12 to 15.
So, we're certainly not cutting.
Right.
And, and it's just, we had more, more requests than what, what that 15% would fund.
And as I said, the reason we get the maximum amount in at 24%, I mean, 24,000, when you go over that dollar amount, there's, there's a whole lot more restrictions and more paperwork that is required that sometimes it's not worth the extra, so that's why you see people coming in at 24,000, because unless HUD changed the rules, that's the magic number.
And Dean did a great job vetting it. It's, I mean, it was a year-long process. He really, and you did a good job, too, but they were vetted and they're all great organizations.
I have a great staff. They, they do really good work on those kind of things, and the housing rehab program is better than it's ever been where, where we have a new administrative assistant to help us get through the proper paperwork, and we're able to do, we just need some more contractors, but we're doing more housing. When you look at the impact that rehabbing a house in a neighborhood does on stabilizing that neighborhood, it's very important. And I know, Jeff, you think I've been preaching this for years, and I'm still preaching it. I'm not, I'm not cutting back on that. It just gives us an opportunity to put a little money into the organizations to help part of our citizenry that really needs that as well.
I know when I talked to Dean when I took over the committee, that was my first. I said, house rehab is my main, my main function.
It is ours, too. It is ours, and it's a good program. It works really, we have people from all over the state coming to see how we do things and learn how to do it the way we've done it. We've worked for many, many years, and I have a great staff that takes care of that, again, I'll say that.
A resolution adopting and approving the 2024 action plan for community block grant program?
Well, I was one of the ones, I guess, who voiced concern about the growing number of applications that, that we get, especially this year. It was a larger number of applications which caused the 34% amount to be used, yeah, to be used across the board. So, that's a concern, and it's a concern that I feel like we may have from now on. Each year, maybe we're going to have more and more, and so I think that's why Rex has suggested that, and Patsy has agreed, that maybe we need to look at a way of going through the applications. And so, you had brought this up, Mayor, maybe we need to look at a committee a little bit different from our current formula or format of committees, and I'd like to just at least discuss that briefly. This Monday night thing that we do now, all in all, I think works really good. I mean, it helps us streamline the council meetings, it, you know, it lets everybody get an advanced look on all the issues, and I think Monday night, the committee of the whole basically has worked really well, but that's not the way we always have done it. And so, I'd like to at least think about the possibility of maybe having a smaller, I don't know if you'd call it a subcommittee or what you'd call it, but a smaller committee to assist Patsy at some point in time to take a look at those applications. I just think a smaller committee might, and on a different night than the Monday night regular committee meetings.
Yeah, and that wouldn't be inconsistent with what we do, I think, the taxi or public vehicle. Oh, we did away with it, though.
But we have done it.
We have done it, I mean, very recently.
Like the Obon Committee we used to have.
Well, you'd mentioned that, you know, we, we set ourselves up in January on committees and, and chairman of committees and everything, so... and chairman of committees and everything, so that's why I'm just asking. I'm not asking for us to make a decision tonight, but I'm not so sure. That might not be a good thing to do for this.
I was thinking, even though Rex did a great job, I was thinking it's putting a lot on one, one committee chair when no other council members have gotten to be a part of the process, when no other committee members have gotten to be a part of, in a, especially with the CDBG thing, and working with Dean and Patsy.
I think we can make it work either way. I think it's good, though, for all of you to hear all of the organizations that do a great job, because you may not know that those organizations are...
Well, the final decision would be made by, by maybe the committee of the whole on a Monday night, but earlier on in the process, maybe a smaller...
A smaller committee to help us determine the priorities of how we want to go each year might really be a good idea, because we still have to follow the HUD guidelines, and there are some major items in the HUD program that we need to follow, and we can use those, and it might be easier for a smaller group to do that. That works good, too.
I guess I'm gonna suggest that we just think about that. Maybe I'll bring it up at the next council meeting, even though it's not January where we set the committees, but...
Do it at a committee meeting.
Yeah, do it at the next committee meeting.
But Mayor, usually that works. That person gets to be the chairman of the committee when you authorize or bring something up like that. In that, it works. A lot of organizations, it does.
We're not gonna kick Rex off.
Although, although, Patsy, what we're talking about doing, the council's gonna make the decisions anyway.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, well, I mean, the way they're studying now, they're gonna bring it forward.
Yeah, but you gotta be...
The council's gonna make the final decision right then.
Right. But you gotta be comfortable with the smaller committee doing all the research, and when they make a recommendation, you gotta be comfortable with they put enough work in to understand how this impacts everything. And that's what a subcommittee does. It does a lot of that extra legwork that everybody doesn't have to do to get to that point.
I think Jeff's ideas, excuse me, are a great idea. It's like you and I talked last week, Mayor. It's the same process as A and P Commission. When we get all this grant money, and we're handing out a lot of money, and we get all those applicants in front of us, and as a committee, and Mike and I serve on it with some other people, but, you know, you break those down, and there's some you give more to, and there's some you cut back and work through the process. But I think that's probably a great idea.
All right. Okay, we still, I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So move.
11A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All right, ready to vote?
Carry seven zero.
All right. Thank you. Item 12, I'm gonna turn it over to Ernest.
Thank you. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing the grant of right-of-way to the Arkansas Department Transportation over and across property owned by the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission in Benton County, Arkansas, and concurring with the amount of compensation related there, too, in replacing resolution number 187-23. This may look familiar to you because you passed resolution number 187-23 in December of 2023. This resolution will just replace that resolution. There was some language that R.D.O.C. wished to be changed in the resolution, so that's why it's being brought forward.
And this is...
Resolution pass?
This is delaying for the airport road. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, and we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, ready to vote? Six and one abstention.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
One abstention. I apologize, Brian. The last item is an ordinance accepting the dedication of land to widen an alley in Block 12 of the original town of Springdale, Arkansas, Platte, Washington County, Arkansas pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated 1454-1042 and declaring emergency. I'd given you kind of a heads up that this was coming. I think at the last council meeting, you passed an ordinance vacating an alley that ran north and south. This ordinance would expand the alley that runs east and west behind the, with the maps on page, trying to get the page number here. Might be the last item, one of the last pages in the packet before the minutes, but...
It's the red page, 46.
It's the one behind the First Security Annex?
Yes, it's the alley running east and west. This would actually be expanding that alley, and this ordinance would accept the dedication of land to expand that alley.
And is that by the, that existing building coming down? It has, would have to, right?
Yes, it runs east and west. It's, it's, it's parallel to the existing alley. It's just widening it by 3,348 square feet. I don't know how wide, wide it is, but...
It's actually a, part of that's gonna be utilized as a drive-through for that, for the bank, correct, Patsy?
Yes, it is. It's an additional 10 feet behind. I saw in those businesses right there, so that they, there will remain the alley that they have to be able to use for loading and unloading and create the ability to have a drive-through that goes to the back of the new First Security Building.
Gotcha.
We've seen the plans. All of those have been submitted. If you look at the street, that was a major renovation that wasn't in as good a shape as they thought as they started, and so the whole thing came down instead of being able to save some of what they thought they were gonna have to save, so.
So is this a planted alley, is just like a city street that we're continuing to be responsible for?
Yeah, but they will repair it, build it to city standards when they do the improvements through there. They're putting the utilities, yeah, they're putting the utilities underground, the new portion. They don't, we'll have to see about getting it overlaid and make it smoother across through there. They're putting the utilities underground, and they're putting the alleyway to extend there, and then when you go through the drive-through, you go to the north and exit onto Johnson, because the Form BEX Code doesn't allow you to have a drive-up window on M Street.
All right.
So in order to widen the alley, we would have to accept the dedication of the land to widen the public alley. That's what this ordinance does.
I make a motion. The ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments, or anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote, guys.
Carry seven, Carry seven zero has an emergency clause.
Move emergency clause to adopt.
Ready for emergency clause? Thank you.
Carry seven zero.
All right. Thank you, and we are at item 14. Do we have any comments from our department heads? No? Counsel?
Mayor, after 47 years of business in downtown Springdale, I will be retiring Thursday, but I'd like to thank the citizens of Springdale. They've been awful good to me.
Yep.
And people like Mayor, Mayor McKinney and Ms. Jones and stuff that taught me a lot about downtown. I had many chances to move to the West Side, but because of their dedication and I chose to stay downtown. But I would, I would like to thank all my customers. I've got people been with me for 47 years, your dad being one of them, by the way. And, but it's a heavy heart. There'll be a few tears, and there has been, so. But I want to thank the citizens of Springdale for all these years.
Well, thank you, Rex, and I need to get one more before, now you said you're retiring Thursday, so you will be working Thursday. Okay.
Rex, Rex, I want you to know that at Shelby Lenz, people have been coming in for about two weeks now, talking about you going into retirement and, and how much they love you and how much they're gonna miss that. And so I've been hearing it on a regular basis. You are very much loved there.
We'll, we'll definitely miss you. The only upside to that is I'll look better now. All right. City Attorney, you have anything?
I can't follow that.
You are. I do have one thing, and you've got a packet that was at your, put at your place before the meeting tonight. These are the current resumes of candidates for our Civil Service Commission. The council chooses, the council fills civil service commissioners' spots. We've got, we've got two that are up. One, Danny McGinley has expressed a desire to continue on the commission, and he has not been on there, I forget how many years, Anna, but it's, I don't think it's been two full terms. And the other is Charles Farmer, who has been on the commission, I think, almost 20 years. And both of these are up April 1. I talked with Charles on the phone yesterday, and he is perfectly content with making room for someone else. If we have a good candidate to take that position, I appreciate that, and appreciate his many years of service. Both he and Danny have done a great job. And so, so you don't get a recommendation from me after we looked at how this works, but I think my, my inclination would be to reappoint Danny and then, and then choose from the resumes a successor for Charles's spot. How would you, how do you want to proceed with that? We've got, we've got these resumes. I think we've got a couple of really good candidates in here, and at least, and we could, if you wanted to do it, we could have them, we could invite them to next week's committee meeting, and you all could ask them any questions you want to ask them, and then if you were ready to forward a recommendation to the following council meeting, then we would just be without, we would just be without commissioners for a week.
I think I'd like to interview them. I mean, I mean, I don't think they need to be here when we vote on them, but, you know, yeah.
Ernest, does that need to be, I got the question earlier, I think from Mark, can that be in executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so could we do that at a, could we go into executive session at a, from a committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. Is that what y'all'd like to do? Maybe next week, we could just go into the executive session room with them one at a time. We'll try and, Anna, we'll try and get them all here. She's reached out to them to make sure how many are still interested, and we can just do, I think that'll be a good process.
Everybody needs a fair, we need to talk to them, be fair with them.
Did you say Charles's term expired?
Both of them expire April 1. So if you want to go ahead, if you decide next week you want to go ahead and, and just interview for the one position, and then reappoint Danny McGinley, then you could do that also. So we're gonna have to deal with both those positions, but...
I don't think we have a meeting scheduled till...
I think it's April, it's the last Monday of April. I think it's the 27th. I'm not looking at the calendar right now.
So if we, if we deal with it, that first meeting and the first council meeting, then they'll be in place in plenty of time.
And how do we appoint them? By resolution?
How long is their terms?
I think it's four years, but I am not positive. I'd have to look at the civil service manual.
Pretty sure it's four years. We can put all that in, we'll have all that information in your committee packet.
So we're talking about the next committee meeting. So I would like to consider going ahead and making this decision tonight that they'd only be interviewing for one spot, if that's possible. Ernest, what do you think? So I guess basically what I'm saying is, yeah, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint Danny.
We can plan on bringing a resolution to that effect to the next council meeting and then have a separate resolution.
But I think it's only fair to, you know, that we know ahead of time whether we're filling one spot or two spots.
Well, we don't, we don't have a resolution preparing. It's not on the agenda, but you can make that, your wish is known, and we can have a resolution for the next council meeting, reappointing Danny, and then we have a separate resolution for the new person.
Sure.
I'd second that.
That would give them, that, then, then we could make sure everybody knows.
Is anyone opposed to making that determination tonight?
Subject to approval by council on April 9.
So I'm moving that a resolution be prepared, that whatever it takes to...
To reappoint Danny McGinley.
And that we only interview for the one position.
Second.
That gives us some good direction.
I don't think, I don't know if we'll be ready to vote on that electronically, so...
Well, we can take a voice vote.
Yeah.
Can I call a roll?
Are you feeling left out, Denise? Let's let Denise call a roll. Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson, Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you. I think that'll work well. So we'll have everything in the packet for the committee meeting, this same information and anything else that changes or comes in. That's all I've got. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we've got a motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.